A call to order the May 12, 2022 Ventnor City Commission meeting to order. Thank you. Anyone please rise for the flag salute. So to the Open Public Meetings Act adequate notice this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. Moving through tonight, see we have some people in the audience. Oh, sorry, missed that one. Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Kreebel.
Here.
Commissioner Landgraf.
Here.
Mayor Holtzman, let the record reflect Mayor Holtzman is absent.
Skip one, I'm sorry. Uh, we do not. So this is our workshop. We start that at 5:30. And we go through our agenda, through any comments that the commissioner, the mayor, I may typically have. At the end of that, we will have a open public session for anybody to ask questions on agenda items, anything we talked about this evening. This evening, we will also have our budget immediately after the budget discussion and actually passing that ordinance. Resolution and asking the budget. We will then move into an executive session. After that, we'll go through the rest of our agenda, finish that workshop out, and then go into our full meeting where we vote on everything. Very end of that, we will have open public for anything you want to talk about. That explanation, we'll go through our agenda real quick. Presentations, we don't have any tonight. Department heads reports none tonight, but we will start those back up. Our second meeting in May, we're going to ask all our department heads like we did pre-COVID. To come in and give us an update on each department, what's going on and where we stand. I don't think we have capital discussion tonight, but that's probably going to come up. May, June, end of May, June, probably. So we're going to have a public hearing, we're going to start that now, right?
Yes.
We're going to do a public hearing on our 2022 budget. Leon, do you speak before or after we go into that public here?
Uh, I'll, I'll go real quick.
Okay.
Just to state that.
There's an amendment, so as I understand.
Yeah, the, the budget that's being presented that we had the public hearing on will be the same budget that you introduced. There's no changes to that.
Okay.
After the public here, we're going to make that one amendment to add that one item in the water and sewer utility.
Okay.
So the public hearing is on the budget that was introduced. And then after the public hearing is over, you'll make a motion either to adopt it, amend it, or do nothing. So the first thing will be to amend it, then you'll take a vote to adopt it will be good for now. So our budget is miles under the cap. We're a million eight to the good on the spending side. And on the levy cap side. Well, under that one too.
There were a million eight under the cap.
Under the cap. You, you could spend another million eight if you wanted to. And you could raise taxes by two million, two fifteen if you wanted to. We're not planning on doing either one of those two things, but that just shows what you've done in the past several years that you're that far under the caps. Because the levy cap accumulates for three years, the spending cap for two years. So you haven't even come close in the past five years of hitting many of those benchmarks.
Right.
So you have huge banks, if you ever were to need them, again, we're not planning on raising taxes or spending more money, but it's there if something happens. Your percentage of collection went up again from last year or stayed about the same as last year, which is pretty high. Your fund balance grew from five million nine to seven million seven. Uh, I think when you guys took off, is your fund balances around two and a half million roughly. And provides for all your services. There's no cuts. There's no funny one-time items in here of revenue. So it's a straight clean budget. Your ratables were up thirty million dollars. That's the highest it's been in since I've been here. You've had many years that was negative. And now it's finally been positive, it's passed for you, and thirty million is your best, and I believe that that trend is continuing.
Right.
I haven't talked to the assessor, but I'm sure Al has and Maria has, and it's still on track to do that or more again next year, this year.
That's not a small point that the ratables were negative, meaning that the values of all the homes then were dropping.
Were dropping.
Year, year over year.
Yes.
For a number of years, I think it was three at least.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's another, yeah, right. So zero tax appeals, meaning there's no.
Zero.
Zero tax appeal.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, now's not the time to do that.
Right.
Good luck. You do a, you do a comp now, you're in a lot of trouble.
You could get raised, remember, the kind of what has the option to raise you, so.
But it also eliminates the line item that was in the hundreds of thousand, north of a hundred for the, for the, for the battle, for the, for the battle of those.
So that's where it stands. Tonight, you're answering any questions from the public might have. We still have one open contract. So, you know, we can't talk about that, but there still is an open contract with a relatively large unit. So, you know, we have to be careful what we do going forward.
Understood. So we need a motion open that to the public at this point?
Yes.
Do I have to have for that motion, Tim?
Motion to open the public as described. A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, at this point, we'll open up the meeting to the public for discussion on the budget, the budget only. Anyone wishing to speak here, please come to the mic, introduce yourself and ask your question.
So, so you.
Yeah, you have to.
Come to the mic because it has to be picked up on a recording.
And you have to give your name and address.
Brenda Dowd, 125 South Little Rock Road.
Thanks.
So was that part supposed to be public? That, that discussion right there.
Yeah, it is public.
It is public.
We're, we're on.
We're in a public meeting.
We're, we're on.
Okay, so it couldn't be heard.
Why didn't you say something when we were talking?
Well, she did raise her hand.
I did.
Yeah. So what part did you not hear?
Yeah, we were really.
So I heard the part about being below the caps. Anything after that, because y'all were talking, that's fine, but I didn't know that that was not part of the executive portion or.
You wouldn't be here.
No, you wouldn't be here.
Okay, fair enough.
No one's allowed in the room except us when we're doing the executive.
So anyway, I didn't know.
Okay, so it's on a, uh, there's a, there's usually a recording that's turned into a, um, a physical transcript that you could have. Or if you have a question about something that you missed.
It was a two minute, it was a two minute conversation. So essentially what Leon was telling us is we're staying under all of our caps.
And so, I'm sorry, who are you?
I'm your city auditor.
Thank you.
He's a consultant, he's our city auditor.
Sweet, right.
So, um, our budget is, is going to be zero increase this year. Um, we did really well with our school budget. We did really well with our budgets. The aspect that we're really talking about was a lot of the ratables have increased. We had a thirty million dollar ratable increase over last year. That's a huge positive for us.
In one year.
In one year. Um, a lot of that is, is focused on certainly the, the price increases through, through the COVID. Everybody wanted to move down here and buy homes, but it was trans transitioning or trending up before we went into the pandemic. So Leon comes and does it. We've had a meeting two weeks or a month ago, I guess, four weeks ago.
Four weeks ago, yeah.
Where we kind of introduced the budget, put that out there for people to look at. Now tonight is when we actually adopt it. Sorry if you couldn't hear.
No, that's fine. I didn't know if the microphones weren't on or because it was.
We have a speaker that goes through. Yep. And the one thing that I mentioned just this conversation, so we can make a point of it, is that, that for years, the, the ratables, the values of the homes were in the negative. Meaning that every house was getting less and less valuable. And that we also had at the same time, a double negative in a way that we were, we had to fight people's tax assessments. So that we have a hundred thousand dollar, north of a hundred thousand dollar expense to pay for attorneys to, to listen to somebody and, and understandably with that, when it, they feel as though their taxes are too high, they want to fight them. So now we have, that line item has completely disappeared and it was a zero number because there were zero tax appeals this year. That was the other comment. So it's all positive stuff.
I'm all on board with the not raising taxes.
You heard that? Anyone else? Mr. Kreischer.
Good evening. Tim Kreischer, Ventnor City. I'm, so I'm a little confused. The, the budget you're going to pass tonight is changed from the budget that we put out. Wasn't the original tax levy, levy up like five hundred and some five thousand dollars?
Yeah, and the ratables offset that.
Okay.
So when you take larger number and divide it.
Yeah. Okay, so even though the levy's up, the rate will be, so there's no tax increase.
Like the levy's up.
Okay, so I just have a few questions. Maria, don't panic. It's not as extensive as. But, uh, just looking at the budget, uh, streets and roads, salaries, the wages is up a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars or nineteen point nine percent. And what is up a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars from what was actually charged? But we adding more people or raises that grade or why is salary and wages?
Five new people this year that, that we haven't had for the last three years.
They haven't filled, backfilled from.
We're backfilling. No new positions. It's just all backfill. Well, that's, yeah, she's not hired. Okay, we are hiring assistant for our city engineer Ed Stinson.
Uh, buildings and grounds.
Labor contracts, everything goes up.
Yeah, but.
Last year.
That's the biggest part of that.
Yeah.
Twenty-two percent, fourteen percent. It's, it's not all labor contracts, I hope.
It's a big chunk.
Uh, buildings and grounds, other expenses is up a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars or forty-four percent. What, what, what is it that increase represent?
Your groceries go up?
It's just so, just.
Everything's going on.
Well, inflation's, inflation's around eight point three percent, eight point five.
So the cost of boardwalk lumber has doubled in the last eighteen months. Cost of fuel's up, cost of everything is up. So that's where our funding in, in public works is going, is cost of everything is up. We, we crunched that down as much as we could, but we want to be safe to be able to pay for things we have to do in the city.
Okay.
Um, so good questions, but, because I asked, I'm like, Ed, why are we doing this? Show me the numbers.
Construction, uh, other expenses were up sixty-one thousand from forty-five, five forty to a hundred and six, which is a hundred and thirty-four percent.
That's for demolition. Demolition, demolition charges that we, that we're going to have next this year. For knocking down dilapidated properties that we didn't have in the prior year.
So it wasn't, it wasn't a line item to compare it to.
No.
That's why it's up so, so, so much.
So what are we, what are we demolishing?
Also part of that, uh, Champions Group thing that we had to change our, we're actually passing an ordinance tonight to amend that.
Yeah, and that's also because we have the revenue, you know, offset against that. So that's, we can't, you can't anticipate that in our budget.
So what happened was at the state level, they deemed this community champions, I think is the name of it, Bill. They came, states said what they were doing was not legal. The monies in a lot of other communities were being used inappropriately. So they basically wiped out the ability to use those funds. So we have to now budget for these demolitions ourselves. And we're going to be actively pursuing dilapidated properties and doing just that. We have, we've done it recently.
Good, great. I'm glad to hear that.
Just to interrupt one thing, that state legislature actually spoke on that issue, they actually, who is lawsuit. With Martin, I saw Bob Gower. What happened was the legislature passed a law category. It says you're allowed to move this without the moving data property. But the monies can allocate differently and they legalized it and it became one less of income.
Okay, and also we have a trust fund, snow removal.
Yes.
That is for.
Snow removal, it's for, if we keep, if we, we budget for snow removal within the current budget, we don't use it, we move it to the trust. So that case, if we get a bunch of snow storms, we have money available for it. If we don't, we still have it for, not future.
So along that line, I, I don't know that you mentioned boardwalk lumber, Commissioner. And the city had received a five hundred thousand dollar grant back in two thousand and five, two thousand and six for, to redeck the boardwalk, which we made a decision at that time to do it in-house, so we didn't have to pay prevailing wage and hire an outside contractor. So we're able to do eighty-five percent of the boardwalk, but that whole boardwalk was done within a year. And the life expectancy at that time of the Kumera wood was fifteen to twenty years. So we're approaching that life expectancy is maybe the city wants to consider putting money into a trust fund annually. To, so that when those boards, they're all going to go around the same time. So the city's going to have to replace a good portion of that wood in a short period of time.
Right.
I'm sure, like you said, the Kumera wood at that time was five hundred thousand.
We've been pretty good on replacing them as we have issues with them, breaks, cracks, damage, whatever. Not a bad idea to look at, at some sort of trust fund. We could look at, can we do something like that?
We would have to get approval from the state to do it. We have to do dedication by rider to do something like that. They just can't just do it on your own.
Sure.
But what we do, we do have, uh, capital ordinances set aside for.
That's what I would be my suggestion.
We already do that already for, and we have some, we, old ordinances are still available for that, that we're using. Um, our, Ed Superintendent, he has it in his budget for capital future plans.
Okay, so we are anticipating those things coming up, so.
Well, the boardwalk is considered in those capital plans and not for something else that you're going to get short.
Oh, it's dedicated by, in, in the ordinance for that purpose.
Good, all right, good. Thank you.
Ed, you have anything on that?
Right, right.
Tim, what we're actually seeing is, and I don't want to blame the dunes, but because the dunes are there now, we don't get the air circulation on the boardwalk. So a lot of the piling, we're having issues. So we're having, last year we replaced three, four.
And then the last thing is, I, I know you try to keep the, the taxes stable, and you guys have done a great job at building the surplus up. If I'm correct, over the last five years, you've more than doubled the surplus from a little over three million to seven point seven. Is that what it was at the end of, end of the year? And you're using three hundred, three point four. Seven point seven million is a lot of surplus, and I know it's for a rainy day, but as you said, Commissioner, things are going up. And people are really struggling now, especially seniors and families with the cost of food, the cost of, um, uh, gasoline to put in their car. That maybe you want to consider maybe giving some of that, more of that back. If you've used an average of about fifty-four percent of the surplus over the five years, this year you're using about forty-four percent of it. If you split that difference of forty-nine percent, that would bring in an additional three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And you may actually be able to have a tax increase this year, still have a very healthy surplus, more than the, the city's had in, in recent years. Use less of a percentage than what you've averaged over the last five. But in these struggling times, use some of that surplus to actually have a tax decrease.
You said tax increase?
Tax decrease. Because yours is flat now, if you used another four or five percent of that surplus and brought it up to the forty-nine percent. I have the exact figure, give you, uh, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, somewhere in that area. Uh, and then also coupled with that, your collection rate, you've used a lot, not a lot, you used about two percentage points less than what you actually collected last year. If you just moved that up point oh oh two percent to ninety point ninety-six, ninety-six point one, that'll bring in another hundred and nine thousand dollars.
I think our first budget, we had a huge discussion on that. And Leon, you explained that, why we didn't do the, the, not the, use more of the surplus, but use more of the collection rate.
Right, and we did use a little bit more, our actual reserve front click, collected tax appropriation went down by thirty-three thousand, which is, you know, unusual that we actually decreased that. The issue with fund balances is that we're using three point four million. If we use more, we had a lot of good things happen that we made that money back this past year.
Right.
If you take a snapshot and say, we're going to use three point eight million instead, in twenty twenty-three, three point eight million must be the first number of our revenue. So that we will stay even. We know one thing that in twenty twenty-three, we'll spend more money than we did in twenty twenty-two. And don't tell me you won't. I'm just, I've been doing this for a long time. All, everything goes up, all the contracts go up. You'll spend more money next year. So our dependency is, when you increase the dependency on the fund balance, once it doesn't work, it's a double dot, double dynamic.
Right.
So we've got to be cautious.
You lose what you didn't get plus.
What you can't allow.
I understand that, but it just seems to me in these.
Honestly, Tim, that's what happened to us when we got in office.
And.
We got buried our first year in, because they did that.
We were one bad sewer line away from complete.
They did tax loss reduction.
Right.
For everybody and depleted, almost completely depleted our surplus.
But your comments are really well taken and well stated. The, the question, there's a couple outliers there. We got, we had a, we had a reduction in students to Atlantic City High School. That was a windfall for this, for the school.
But that's not in this.
That's not in here, but we don't know what those, what those things could be in the coming years, or some labor contracts that are still not resolved, which are still out there. And all those other inflation aspects that you talk about for the public have a mirror image to the city for our dependence. So it, I don't know that I personally feel comfortable using that fund balance.
And it's a matter of philosophy, but just at one point, do you, do you give some back to the public as opposed to continually growing the surplus year after year after year?
We are using three point four million dollars of it, correct?
We're using three point four, yeah.
But if you used, if you used four billion, you'd have a tax decrease, give back some back to the public, still have a healthy surplus. You may, at the end of next year, you may not have seven point seven.
Right.
But you still have a healthy surplus.
From what Leon is telling us, we would have to start out at that four million now instead of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for twenty twenty-three.
And, and we, we've, we've done very well.
It's a double decrease is what.
In, in, in coming through this pandemic. We had a huge decision on our, on our benefit, you know, this is like playing Monopoly and the bank made an error in your favor. FEMA forgave a huge payment repayment that we had to make because of errors in the past. That FEMA money we got five million dollars that we got right after Sandy, that was inappropriately used by the municipality. We had to pay two and a half million dollars back. Over four years. That's a lot of money. After the first year of paying that back.
To.
First two years of paying that back, they forgave the rest of it.
And that is what, Leon, three cents on the taxes?
It's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, yeah.
That was, that's why we have the ability right now to do the things we're doing. Because one, we've done what we're supposed to do with FEMA, with other agencies throughout the states. We got Al as our assessor, CFO. And Leon is our order. These guys guide us through this stuff. I'm not an expert in this. Tim's not an expert in this. So we rely on their guidance and honestly, they've given us really good guidance over the past six years.
Obviously, you've grown the surplus, you know, doubled the surplus in five years to seven point seven. And I pre, I think you guys have done a great job of growing that surplus. It's just at some point, I think some of it should go back to the public, but it's about, you're, that's, you know, you, that's the way you feel. I understand and appreciate it, but.
Look, if, if it's something that, that these guys think it's the best thing to do, then, then we'll certainly weigh both sides of it. I would always love to give back to, to the taxpayers and reduce that where I can, and we've done that in the past.
Right, and I feel like we've done it in a controlled way with other aspects and departments and things that we can.
We've got.
We've increased.
So here's, here's something that, that is not quite out there yet. I've spoken about it twice from, from the dais with regard to the, the lead replacement of, of water lines in the city. That, our rough estimates is to the tune of sixty-five million dollars over the next ten years that we're going to have to spend.
Mandated.
Mandated by the state of New Jersey. You know, and everyone's going to get this in their next water bill. It's a required letter from the state. We didn't write it. We don't like even mailing it to you. We're being forced to do it. They want, so I calculated wrong on how much it would cost to send that certified, which is their requirement as well.
Right.
Instead of twenty mil, twenty thousand dollars, it'd be forty-five thousand dollars to mail a certified letter to every resident, resident city member.
Before you pay for any improvements.
Yeah, so we're not, we're going to put it in your water bill. So that's how you're going to get it. They're requiring us to replace every service line that is galvanized in the city.
Nationwide, right?
Well, New Jersey's not doing that. Uh, New Jersey's making every municipality, if you have a galvanized or lead line or, um, gooseneck is what they call it, going to your house, it has to be replaced. City has to do that from the water main to the house, not to the curb, to the house. So the estimates we're getting for that work is sixty-five million dollars. We've applied for grants. We've talked, I've talked directly to the DEP Commissioner, John Letterett. I was in a meeting with him two weeks ago. And told him, we can't afford that. Small towns can't afford that. Tied on top of that, the state, the state's threshold for lead in your water is fifteen parts per billion. You know where we are? Any guess where we might be? Less than two. So, and, and he says to me, well, no lead in your water is good. I said, I agree. Why is your threshold fifteen? You're telling me the threshold's two and I got to do this? I'm on board. Let's do it. But don't tell me the threshold is almost fifteen times what we have, right? And I have to do this when our taxpayers die? I can't.
So the state's mandating that?
Every municipality.
So when did that fall under state mandate, state pay?
I've made that argument.
I don't think that exists anymore.
I, I have made that argument, Tim. I have tried.
Again.
So, so I'm in discussion.
All right, thanks.
Thanks so much. Well.
Now, that's the.
In fact, you know, I want to take your time to make.
That's all right.
Thank you for your feedback.
It's important.
You know, Ventnor is in a unique position, in a better position than a lot of small towns.
You are.
And if the state's going to come in and mandate that you re, every, every municipality in the state replaces, because everybody's in the same boat.
They are.
Yeah, that will change. And again, I don't want to, I don't want to bring, I don't want to bring politics into this, but that will change soon, quickly after the new administration takes over. Because all those people will be voted out of office if they're going to mandate every municipality replace those lines.
Now, how many towns I've talked to that don't know anything about it?
A lot.
A lot, yeah.
We were on the, we were on the neutral mark, we were on the official meeting. And it was less than a third of the town.
So, so all that would be financed, sixty, you can't, it's a city for bonded, right? But you're still talking about servicing that kind of debt, which is just crushing.
Sixty-five would.
And tearing up your city.
And tearing up your city. That's.
Right. Take one of these new multimillion dollar homes. Well, they won't, they have all the lines. But say you have a home that's been around a while, Lake Mine, hundred year old. I'm sure the line from the street to the house is galvanized. My line runs under my driveway. I got to take a, city, the city is responsible for it, not the homeowners.
Exactly.
Which is, goes down, goes completely in, in the face of everything that we've learned as municipal people. Behind the curve is the homeowner's responsibility.
Not anymore.
Not in this particular case.
Yeah, so.
It's a shame. Like I said, that's got it. That, that will change. So, but thank you for your feedback.
Pump the brakes on the fund balance.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we're.
Pump the brakes. Um, anyone else in, in the room talking about our budget tonight? Jim, anyone online, any comments?
Anybody in, on Zoom who wishes to speak or comment on the budget, please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand within the chat feature and you'll be recognized. I'm trying to recognize, you may unmute yourself and speak to the commission. No, no takers.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing on the budget. Motion to close public hearing on the budget. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, now we need to do a resolution to amend, is what you said.
Two-line resolution to amend to add some interest on, for notes.
Okay. Need a motion.
In a word and sore.
Okay, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash one seventy to amend the twenty twenty-two municipal budget to add the items that Leon just talked about. Motion as described. Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Landgraf?
Yes.
Now you need a motion to adopt the budget.
I get a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-two budget, which is, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash one five four. Motion to adopt the twenty twenty-two budget, twenty twenty-two dash one five four. Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Landgraf?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to have to go into an executive session to discuss some, I call litigation, potential, potential litigation. With that, I have to read the little handy-dandy cheat sheet. Uh, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within executive session as an exception to certain provisions of said law. Ventnor City Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within the executive session and a discussion.
And a discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when legally permitted and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. The matters to be discussed, as I said, are potential litigation. So we won't be that long, fifteen minutes at the most, if that, if that. Alright, so I'll ask for a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion to come out of executive.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, uh, for the purpose of the record, we, uh, entered closed session at six oh one. Uh, PM, we're exiting closed session at six oh eight PM. The topic of discussion was potential litigation involving a, uh, home inspection at a residence here in Ventnor. Uh, myself and Mr. Nemat on behalf of the city negotiated a resolution of a potential claim with the homeowner. Uh, regarding an electrical inspection and an allegation of negligence against the city. Uh, without admitting any liability, we were able to solve the matter for a total sum of five thousand dollars. We drafted a release. Uh, which will be sent if this resolution is passed and there's been a resolution prepared, one seventy-one of twenty twenty-two. To basically memorialize the agreement and take action.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I get a motion to adopt, uh, Resolution one seventy-one of twenty twenty-two.
Motion to adopt Resolution as described.
My second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang Graham?
Yes. Moving on. Minutes, we do not have minutes from our last two meetings. We'll have them the next, our next meeting in May. Uh, ordinance introduction. We have an introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight. It is the vacant property foreclosing, uh, chapter one seventy-nine ordinance amendment. Uh, and that deals with, I think, the conversation we just had earlier with the demolition of properties and things of that.
Exactly, yes. To refer to that, so we don't, uh, it's now it's going to be in our hands.
Right.
We have to amend the ordinance equally.
There's a requirement to have it done by, I think, August of this year or some.
That's correct.
It seems to be a time. When we had to do the cannabis, it was by August. Is that something in the state legislature that some date that they picked?
It must be, because actually three or four things seem.
Okay. Probably a timing thing. Uh, the next ordinance, uh, introduced is twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine. Which is the chapter one fourteen fee schedule. These are our fees in our construction code office. Um, that haven't been increased in quite some time.
Right.
We're bringing them up to par with, uh, similarly sized municipalities. There's some other fees outside of the code, yes. Which ones are those? So it's everything goes.
This, the, uh, this is everything, that's correct. Yeah, we, there was a, this has probably been a year and a half in review.
Worked, yeah.
With all the departments and they got comparables for fees that are related to their departments and. They've been reviewed and Lisa and I have met multiple times, but she's been handling the bulk of it with the departments.
Okay.
And, um. And we have a couple decreases in there too, if I recall.
Yeah, we're a little high on a couple.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Yeah. So, you know, it's, there's a lot of comparable info, including if there is no increase. Or no change or no decrease.
As an example, the, the commercial landscapers fee will go up. From, uh, let's see, it goes up from, that market deal was license, hundred dollars per annum, up from fifty bucks.
Yeah, the bulk of these have probably not been looked at for many, many years. It's, it's a project.
We actually looked at every single fee.
Yeah, yeah, we went through every, which, instead of doing them here and there.
Do them all once.
Which is why.
It makes sense.
That's why it took us a while. So we do have a chapter now for these.
Right.
So we added that forward. Yeah, it's going to be much easier to be able to compare, you know, and look at ourselves.
Good. Okay, uh, we will have a public hearing and adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven. Hard it is not to say double oh seven every time I read that every year. That is, uh. Twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five salaries and wages compensation for members of Ventnor City lifeguards. This brings us in line with their contract on the city.
And also with the minimum wage.
Minimum wages. Uh, that's it for ordinances. We go into resolutions. We have a consent agenda for resolutions one fifty-six through one sixty-nine. We will adopt them all in a group. Uh, the first one fifty-six is canceling Resolution twenty twenty-one, three fifty-two. The Garrison Enterprises, this is a change order. Ed, you want to go through a little, that a little bit? This is hydrants from Surrey and Edgewater. And purchasing valves and installation.
Yes, Commissioner, this, this, we had, um. Requested and commissioners passed a resolution authorizing an award to Garrison Enterprises for an insertion valve. Uh, we ended up not needing the insertion valve for the location specified in that first, uh, resolution. We needed a different location. We thought we could just. Move Garrison over to that other one. But, but we are, um, reminded that we need to do it officially by resolution. So cancel the first one that we did. And authorize a new location.
Alright, thank you. One fifty-seven, twenty twenty-two dash one fifty-seven, authorizing the first agent to prepare plans and specifications for fire hydrants. The city of Ventnor. Um, that's you, Al. You'll help prepare them with Public Works.
Right, that I, that's, that's, uh, that's the cases for these already authorized, uh, ordinance.
Gotcha. And then the next one is the same thing, but for water meters.
Correct.
Alright, so that's one fifty-seven and one fifty-eight. One fifty-nine is a refund of recreation fees to Rebecca Rosner, pool man for twenty twenty-two Downbeat Surf Camp. Self-explanatory. And a, uh, refund to Guy Berger for rental CO for fifty dollars. That's one sixty. One sixty-one supporting mi- mi- members to the Ventnor City School Board. These are reappointments. This is for, um, Lori Abbott and Jim. They're, I think they filled the vacancy of a, in a short. Yeah. Term. So they are.
Great.
Yeah, and Lori and Jim Quinlan. Jim's a new member, somewhat new resident, three years now.
Right.
Um. But wanted to get it active and he's an attorney, he's a sharp guy. He's been diving right in.
Yeah, and I, and I recommended Lori, so I'm glad she's sticking her, she's staying with it. I appreciate that.
It is good. And one sixty-one was that one, supporting school board members. This is our agreement with the municipal alliance, right? Drug abuse and, and DMHAS.
It's an additional grant, yeah.
It's more, yeah. Leadership grant. So we'll take some dollars in from that. Um, one sixty-three is Resolution oh ninety of, it's amending Resolution oh nine. Zero nine zero of twenty twenty-two, proving rates changes in fees for the year twenty twenty-two for the rec department in the city of Ventnor. One sixty-four is authorizing the appointment of Assistant Supervisor of Public Works to John Connor, effective January one, twenty twenty-two. We had had him as, as kind of temporary in that position or something, or. But now we're moving fully into that spot. It's kind of a trial period, so. At. Resolution one sixty-five. Authorizing the sale by a public auction property located at sixty-five twelve Ventnor Avenue. Identified on the Ventnor City tax map as lot fifteen and block seventy-one. This is the property where the fire was July weekend. Three years ago, I guess.
Yeah.
Now, there's a minimum bid on that, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, right?
Well advertised twice, um, once on May sixteenth and once on May third, and we'll have the auction on May third.
Okay. That is, um, and we, we've paid eighty-five for it.
Right.
I mean, we had hoped to do an open space green park there and that, that still may be viable with.
Right.
If the person who's interested in the property does what they want to do, they may want to do something like that.
Right. I guess it's still, it's still, it's owned as mixed use, right?
Commercial.
Commercial. So it could, they could do a park sometime.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And you have to set the minimum bid up.
Yeah, what the appraisal value is. We didn't, we didn't randomly choose that number that is.
We used the, we used the calculations. We spoke with the taxes.
Yep.
Use the calculations.
That number rather than spending. Appraiser.
Appraiser.
And that's new. We're allowed to do that. That's somewhat new.
That's correct.
Certainly, we would have had to gone out.
Correct.
To get an appraisal value.
So we, we did some research on it, figured it out, got the numbers and came up with the two seven.
Two seventy. And the auction is going to be on five, three, five thirty-one.
Right, so the advertisement has to be, uh, two advertisements, seven days apart. And then it has to be more than seven days from the second advertising.
Okay.
That's why we picked those. They're doing it around Memorial Day weekend. We give a lot of action in people in town.
Okay.
They're interested.
What's, what's the format of the auction?
It's online.
It's online?
Yeah. Is it online or is it just, um, the last one we did?
Was live.
Was live.
Live.
That's what we did. Mr. McGuire was here and.
Yeah, sounds good.
Get your auctioneer voice going there, Bill. Or marketing.
Yes.
See, we might have to have a little competition there. Next resolution is authorizing a refund for tax home state rebate credit. One sixty-seven is authorizing. I'm going to pull one sixty-seven. That's right, we're pulling that one. One sixty-eight. Sale of one nineteen ninety-seven Kami fire apparatus in the city of Atlantic City, which is deemed no longer needed for public use. For twenty thousand dollars. Chief, you got anything to say about it?
Kale, you want to take a victory lap on that?
Excellent. Good work. And that's, you know, that's twenty grand we didn't have. Maybe we had to store somewhere.
Exactly, and maintain potentially, and that, that twenty thousand is going right directly towards the new piece. Parts. And the general fund.
Right, we're, we're actually, uh, funding back, uh, his operating budget with that twenty thousand.
Okay.
Great.
And look, I, I know some of the firemen that, that work in Atlantic City, they're happy to use our stuff. Because it's well maintained and that's a credit to you and your staff. They are, they're thrilled to get it. Yep. Good stuff. Uh, the last one, one sixty-nine is authorizing the hire of Ryan Devini as a laborer one. Water. Water. Yes. Good. Um, yeah, that's, we interviewed. What, ten guys? At least? Yeah. Yeah. Then we'll do our bills and payroll. We have, uh, no discussion items that I've seen.
None that I'm aware of.
Anything from you, discussion wise? Public portion. So this is the public portion on anything we've discussed so far. I'll need a motion to open that, uh, to the public, Tim.
Motion to open public portion on, uh, items discussed so far.
I'll second that. Roll call, not roll call, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So, again, like we did the first time, this is actually public portion on items that we've discussed through the, the whole agenda here. Um, last one was just for the budget. This is for any item that's on our agenda. Anybody in here? So we'll do at the end of that, when, when we, when we vote on all these, then we'll open it up to the general public on anything. Jim, anything on, from the, uh, Zoom meeting?
Uh, it's Justin, that and Andy Stairs getting on right now. Um, so anybody, um, in Zoom who'd like to speak or question any of the items that are being voted on tonight? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand within the chat feature and you'll be recognized.
Okay, seeing none, we'll ask for a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
My second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, last for a motion to close the, the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order the regular meeting.
Motion to close workshop.
My second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we will call to order our public portion, regular portion of our meeting tonight. And, uh, we'll go through that agenda we just discussed. But first, we have no, no minutes to approve. I need a motion to, uh, introduce ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight as previously discussed.
Motion to introduce ordinance as described.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang Graham?
Yes. Okay. I need a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine as previously discussed. This is the fee ordinance, fee schedule.
Motion to introduce ordinance as described.
Second, roll call?
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang Graham?
Yes. Need a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven. It's twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, it's hard to say. Salaries, wages and compensation for members of Ventnor City lifeguards.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance as described.
Second, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang Graham?
Yes. Okay, this is, meeting is open to the public on this ordinance. Anybody wishing to comment, please step forward, state your name and ask your questions or make your comments. Jim, I'll ask you to do the same there as well.
So anybody in Zoom who wishes to speak or question on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven? Please make yourself known within Zoom by raising your hand within the chat feature and you'll be recognized.
Seeing none in the audience or on Zoom, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero seven.
Second, roll call, please?
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang Graham?
Yes. Need a motion to adopt by consent, Resolutions one fifty-six through one sixty-nine excluding. One sixty-seven.
Motion to, to adopt resolutions as described.
My second, roll call, please?
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang Graham?
Yes. Now, our bills and payroll, please.
Yes, uh, the bill list for this period was seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-one cents. And the, uh, payroll for this period was five hundred and fifty thousand, five sixteen, forty-six cents.
You know, but, thank you, Al. Need a motion to approve bills and payroll.
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
My second, roll call, please?
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lang Graham?
Yes. Uh, announcements and safety report. Our safety report is printed on the agenda. We don't, we don't read that, uh, anymore. It's like, um. Anything on that, Tim?
No.
Claims, oh, that's on the, mail report is all on the.
Yes.
On the agenda. Commissioner, comments? Anything?
Um, briefly, I met with, um, uh. A couple of members of the business community this morning on changing the, on the correction to the. Direction of Newport Avenue so that it follows the ordinance and we spoke with, um. Uh, the police chief and, uh, as well, um, listened to their. Um, their concerns and their side of the story. We're going to, we, we discussed it, um, again this afternoon. Um, and the, at this point, I, Brendan, the audience was there. Um, we're looking at, um, I don't think that the, 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 it's going to fall under whether. Um, people are, are willing to lose eleven parking places in the downtown. Um, but there's a lot of concern about two-way traffic on that street as well, being a safety issue. So it's, um, we're going to circle back on it with, um, some more business owners in the direct area and. Um, and the police chief again, and try to come up with a decision before the, the Memorial Day weekend.
We're working through signage that would direct people better. Uh, there's a standard type of sign useful parking. It's a blue circle with a P in it.
Right.
Um, we're going to work towards those, getting those done. Even if we don't, do go back, we're going to get more signage for the parking lots there.
Yeah, and then they're, they're kind of generic and it would just be, uh, it would be the, the blue P with a, with an arrow.
Depending which way you want.
Depending on where this falls or doesn't fall, or they would just be the locations where they go. So.
Okay, all right, keep us up to date on that.
Yeah, be soon.
The, the street, look, they have some background in that as well, the street's not wide enough for two-way traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
If we can, we're going to look at it again, the only way that it's even close to being wide enough is to remove the parking, which I don't know that that's a good idea.
Right.
So we have to look at it.
Right. There's, yeah, there's, it's not, the cartway's not, not wide enough for, for two-way and parking, that's clear, that's not, that's kind of a nonstop. But the, the direction, the direction of it, and the direction of it, if you change the direction so that there's one, there's now three streets going in the same direction, that could be an effect on, on response time, for people that are in those areas where you are now diverting your traffic in directions that are away from where the emergency is, and minutes, make minutes matter in emergency response, so there's, it's not something that we take lightly, but there's a lot of conflicting emotions on the subject that we tried to address.
Okay, good, thank you, and thank you for taking that meeting and meet with Brendan.
Sure.
Some of our other business owners, so, good. Our standpoint, we're sorry to say that the, the block party had to be canceled, but it was the right decision. It was blowing forty consistently with sixty mile an hour gusts.
Wouldn't have been much of a part.
No. No, no, tight, maybe, maybe, maybe. So, sorry to say that that was canceled, but we'll move forward to the next event.
Yeah.
Chef's Night Out, we have coming up on the twenty second of May, it is sold out event, three hundred and twenty five or fifty plus tickets. Shelley just gave me an update downstairs, apparently, everyone's going to get a chef's hat to wear around town.
Yep. Yep.
We'll have, have the net there for group photos of that. There's also, our season kicks off with our events on the World Day Weekend, I don't know that we've talked about doing the ribbon cutting like we always do.
No, no, but I, I do, I apologize, I do want to circle back to the marathon.
Yeah, I was going to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, yeah, no. Marathon is Sunday, the Hard Rock Marathon, the Rock and Roll Marathon.
Rock and Roll Marathon.
That will run from Bader Field, out Black Horse Pike, probably out some of the expressway, loop back around from down to our boardwalk, run the length of our boardwalk, right on the pier, loop around, be on our streets, or our boardwalk, no bicycles will be allowed on the boardwalk from six AM to two PM. Limited pedestrian traffic will be able to walk it, but just be careful, streets, there'll be street closures, a lot of things like that. Find something else to do than drive a car on Sunday around the island, and that's just not here, that's Atlantic City, it's going to be tough to get around.
Yeah, it's massive.
It's huge.
There's a.
Really big event, it was run by, this one's by Hard Rock, is this JCC that runs this? This isn't Del Monte.
No. But it, it is, I think there's a number of bands along.
Oh, yeah.
Route.
Our pavilions, we're pulling out our benches out of the pavilions, there's going to be bands set up along the boardwalk playing music as these people run by. They would need to have an ambulance at each one of those for me if I was running.
So. Yeah.
No. Yeah, I'm sure, sure. It's a big event, and it brings people in our town, I remember the first year, we allowed them to run out on the pier, they're doing the pier again this year, right, Ed? First year we did that?
Right.
And I think it was for Del Monte Sports, his, his event, Iron Man or something? And the comments that I got, I, we helped fund some of that at CRD, and they pay us for use of our streets, they pay our overtime, they pay our stuff, so it's good. The biggest comment they got, they loved running out on the pier.
Right.
They don't do that anywhere else on any of the marathons that they all run, these people run these things all over the world, I've got a friend who's done one in every state, and he's done to London. I think someone else, somewhere else in France, he's done them all over the place.
So, so Saturday morning, there's a five K, which doesn't, doesn't enter, doesn't go into.
Stays in AC.
Stay, yeah, doesn't enter Ventnor, but Sunday at seven thirty, starting at Bader Field, there's going to be a lot of traffic.
Yep. All through town, so be aware. Do you know the number of participants, any? Yeah, it's the numbers I was hearing.
Thousand. So, starting today and every day until Saturday, I asked the social media to push it out on all platforms.
Good.
At least once or twice a day. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, they got no parking on Atlantic in Chelsea, lower Chelsea, yeah. So that's, you know, it's an event, it's a good event, draws people, our town, as I said, the biggest comment they got was people running out of the pier. Yeah.
We should like when they'll be at certain, around.
They start at six AMs, they're, they're saying it's going to run till two PM to the, to the slower runners.
Yeah, and it's.
Do when you think they'll be in Ventnor and when bands will be set up.
So I would say if they start at seven thirty, the first runner will be in Ventnor, probably within an hour.
And, yeah, and streets are, are, I think the streets are blocked until four.
Yeah.
Missed Sunday?
Sunday, bulk of it, it's Sunday.
Yeah. Um. I had an interview today with the Coastal Coalition People, not Coastal Coalition, Coastal Preservation Issue Group, Finest Preservation Group, they are, have been on our beach for the last three years now. At least, at least three, the, from the pier towards Atlantic City, they have put out stakes that have stopped us from raking a certain area, we, we joined with them in this, to see how it would allow the vegetation to grow down the toe of the dune, and increase the dune, and it has, if you look at the, you stand on the pier, look towards Atlantic City, it's about forty feet up to the toe of that, you look down towards Margate, and it's where it's always been. So it's a, it's a good program, we don't do it on the south side or southwest side of the pier, because that beach takes so much erosion there that we would lose too much of our, our beach in the summertime. But, it may be something we think about to accrete some of that sand back, we'll, we'll have to see. But they came to talk to me about the program, you know, why we've just paid a little bit, how we like it, and then how we think our dunes, what the, the dune program itself has been a benefit to our community, and I talked about that, so it'll be on their website, I'm sure they'll send a copy. It'll be from the half hour interview, there'll be about three seconds of me talking. Instruction projects are moving forward, we're getting closer with finishing up most of those, right?
We are.
Right. Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Just a quick note, there is a download PDF that shows where there are bands going to be for this concert, there's going to be one on Somerset and Ventnor, there's going to be two on the boardwalk, and one on Washington Midway, so we'll post that as well, the PDF that shows the band locations during the route.
Cool, should be fun. All right, I'll ask for a motion to open the public comment for any item.
Motion open for public comment on any items.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now's your chance.
We're, we live on South Street.
What's your name, please?
My name's Donna Felker.
Mindy Cohen. Well, we're here because we weren't sure where to address it, and when we called, it was suggested that we come in and bring this issue to you for some guidance for us. We're calling in relation to the church bells that ring from every hour from eight AM to eight PM, seven days a week.
Right, right.
And I had been in touch with Father Pavel several months ago, requested, what triggered this was back in November, December, the bells were broken, and they were ringing either incessantly or.
Off times.
Really loud.
They were ringing out like.
It just brought.
I called the mayor on that, because I live right here, I hear him.
It brought everything.
It was like at seven o'clock, they ring nine times.
It was really.
It was chaos.
But it wasn't at seven, it was like six forty five.
Right.
Yeah, it was the ring to ring.
Yes.
And, and the volume had gone off significantly, and so I had reached out to Father Pavel, and we communicated by text for a while, and I was invited to come to one of their council meetings to discuss this issue, to request that the volume be lowered, and address the need of whether or not the bells really had to ring twelve times a day, seven days a week, because I moved here six years ago, and until he came two years ago, we had no.
They were broke.
They, yes.
But they have, the bells have knocked out, I've been here over thirty years, and there were no, I don't remember any.
So, he said to me that when he came.
They, they were, they were broken for a while, I called the mayor.
Yeah, so.
She goes to that church, I would, I would call to stand our, our resident, our chief.
It's really different, what they did, anyway, after three months, I'd fol, just followed up with Father Pavel, and the bells have recently been, the volume has been lowered. It's a new tune that actually is longer, but it's lower.
Probably within the right decibel level.
And I had asked him, was there any, any issue on reducing the number of times a day, and he basically said no. He also said, which really upset me, that there was a perception of, I don't know if it was me personally, but of having, being, this being an anti-Catholic sentiment, which
Didn't resonate with anybody.
Was very, very upsetting, because it has absolutely nothing to do with religion, and in fact, I felt like we, those of us who had gone to the council meeting, there were only two of us that we were extremely respectful, and we weren't asking that the bells never ring.
Right.
We were just asking that could we come up with some neighborly medium where we were all unhappy together? And.
Split the babies.
We've often never heard of any residential area being, having bells go off every hour from eight AM to eight PM on the hour.
Go to South Philly.
I grew up in here, I grew up. I grew up in South Philly, and I didn't hear them.
I did.
I just came back from ten days in Rome, and was staying right across the street from a church, and I didn't hear them there, anyway, I don't want it to be about religion.
Understood, and it's not, it's.
We're asking for is for the amount of times that the bells go off.
We don't, I, I don't think this stuff falls under anything. There's nothing. Jurisdiction that we could even comment on.
There's noise, noise orders, but I'm pretty sure church bells are exempt from them.
I can read church bells are exempt.
In a lot of cities, they are.
I'm thinking the state probably exempts them, but we'll, we'll take a look at that aspect of it.
Yeah.
I know, geez, forget the name of the church, right here. Let's start with C, Methodist Church, right here, Saint John's, Saint John's by the C, it has C in it, they ring their bell by hand, actually, at least they used to, there was a guy, it's a rope, and he rings eight, every, eight thirty, every, every Sunday morning, that's the only time they ring.
Well, that would be lovely. Once, once a week would be lovely.
Eight times a day.
I know, I hear it.
Twelve, whatever.
I hear it. We'll take a look at our ordinance, but I'm not necessarily comfortable telling a church that they can't ring their bells.
No, I'm not telling.
We're not asking not to not ring them, just to lower the amount.
Even to limit the number, I, I'll, I'll see what we can do, we'll ask our attorneys to take a look at that.
Yes, we will.
And then.
Okay, that's where, really why we're here, is just to ask for some guidance and advice, how to handle it in a neighborly, courteous.
You know where my pet peeve is with noise, does anybody else hear Atlantic City's ten o'clock curfew alarm go off every night at ten AM, ten PM?
No.
Every night, I hear, every night.
No.
Yeah.
You know what I hear?
Was this?
I hear the train.
I like the sound of the train.
I do, too. That's what I hear every morning. The traffic, I mean, every night.
Ten o'clock, every night. Open your, I'll sleep, my window is open, so I hear it.
I agree.
Really?
It's just when you, you can't work on your porch, you can't take a nap unless it's five after to five of the hour.
Our grandchildren come for the summers, and every summer, it's, they, they can't nap, so.
All right, well, like I said, we'll take a look at it, I don't know that we have jurisdiction to tell the church to turn off the bells, or limit the bells, or do whatever, yeah. Well, we, we can ask again.
Whether they're exempt or not would be helpful, number one.
Our ordinance does not exclude that.
Okay, all right, so maybe we can, we can take a look at it, is there anything in the state that I would be concerned about, too?
The reason, what Donna had found, the reason why we came.
This is under your.
There's the decibel level limitations on daytime and night.
It's the def, there's the definition of noise, but there's also prohibited acts, and it said, no person shall cause, suffer, allow, or permit to be made verbally or mechanically, directly or indirectly, any noise which disturbs, which it does disturb, injures or endangers the health, comfort, safety, or welfare of others. It's specifically intended that an owner or landlord be responsible for the actions of his tenants or other persons residing within the leased or rented premises, but there.
That, that's in our rental ordinance.
That's in our, it says prohibited acts, under, that's what it's under.
So, nowhere in there does it talk about a church.
No.
I'm uncomfortable telling a church what to do, I'm just, I, I, we're going to look into it more.
Fair enough.
We'll have a conversation, I'm not going to tell the church to not ring their bells.
We're not.
Uncomfortable doing that.
We're not, we're not really asking you to do that at this point, we're just asking for.
We'll, we'll look into a little more, thank you. I know Beth is a member of that church, she can maybe talk to the priest there. I, I don't know him, I'm not Catholic, so that's, I don't know him, that'd make us one, two, last thing we just want to. But we'll, we'll take a look at it, it's all, it's all I really can do, but unless, I, I gotta think this is a separation of church and state at its best definition.
What would be the right follow-up for us, just to wait to hear back from you?
You can reach out, you send me an email, and, and we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll get back to you that way, it's easiest way to get me, or, or call, my cell number, six oh nine, three three five, oh five oh five, it's on our webpage.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thanks, ladies, sorry you had to wait so long for that. If we wait another fifteen minutes, we can hear the bells go off. We will, we absolutely, we'll open the doors. Sorry, a little levity. Anyone else in public, Jim, anybody out there, want to say anything?
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on any issues, please make yourself known within Zoom, and you'll be recognized.
In the meantime, we have Brendan Dowd coming up to the mic, so we'll listen to her.
Again, sorry, anyway, my question is about signage. And whether or not, so the city spends a lot of money on concerts. For a location that nobody knows where it is, Ski Beach. Can we not get some signage at the corner of Dorset and Atlantic, Ventnor, endorse it? Wilmington, or Wellington, endorse it, just to direct people to where Ski Beach is.
We can do that, we have to get permission from our friends at the county to be able to put it up.
Right.
Totally tongue in cheek.
And, and then. And then we have a sign shop, but it doesn't make great signs.
You have a sign shop that doesn't make great signs?
Well, it doesn't make signs that you might consider where.
Direct.
Yeah.
That's all we need, Ski Beach.
We would like a nice sign, we'll, we'll get some.
Yeah.
Well, we can talk about nice signs, because we need a lot of nice signs in the city.
You could design one.
I could, however, but it is important.
You're right, I agree.
You spend a lot of money, and it's a great community effort for concerts that are on a location where visitors who aren't from here don't know where it is and how to get there.
Agreed.
See how easy that was?
It is. Jim, did anybody chime in on, on Zoom?
Uh, no, Andy, did you have anything, Andy, Andy Stair is the only one in, in the audience, other than on that, in that.
Okay, motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close public portion.
Second, roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We already did our executive session, and I'll ask for a motion to anything else, for the go-to-the-order? No? Year and up for the summer, the weather would cooperate, I think we're, they may have skipped summer, we went right to fall, right? Maybe, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.